All right. Good evening. It is 6:30 PM, Monday, October 4th. We have a quorum present, so we are going to call this meeting to order. I do want to remind everyone that the mics are live. So the microphones are really, really good, too. So they will pick up every little noise, so please be careful with your microphones so everyone watching online can hear the speakers clearly. So we're going to go into the workshop session. Do we want to -- Donna, do we want to do the presentation first or go through the agenda real quick?
It's up to you, either one.
Okay, so we'll just go through the agenda really quick. So we've got Brandon with the invocation. I'll be leading the pledges. So does anyone have any comments on Agenda Item 1, Public Hearing? Nope. Anything on the Consent Agenda item? Two? Three? Four? And Consent Agenda item number five? Okay, moving on to regular hearing, Agenda item number six. And number seven?
Number seven, we will need to pull that and delay that to the next meeting. So we did not note that it does change several different sections of our Code of Ordinance, so we need to restate that when we put it on the next agenda.
Okay. And so then that brings us to Agenda item number eight. Any comments? Number nine?
I did have a question about that. We already selected our...
Number eight?
Number eight, yes.
Okay.
Do we have to redo Alex Buck if we also -- if we add Ann Palmigal or...
No, so you already gave us direction to include Alex Buck. And so now we would just add Ann Palmigal to that list of nominations. So we would have two nominations.
Okay.
I know that she had -- was curious about this and interested in it, but did she?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, great, great.
She and I talked and she is so grateful.
Okay. And that leads us back to number nine. Then we'll go to reports, and it's my understanding that you do not have a closed session this evening?
It is correct.
Okay. All right. So then we'll go back to the Agenda Item B, Overview of Changes to Special Events Ordinance. We've got the Director of Neighborhood Services, Chris McGinn, and Director of Communications and Tourism, James Kunkie, for the PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, council members. I wanted to brief council a little bit about some of the changes to our Special Events Ordinance. Originally, the last time we made changes to this ordinance was back in 2007, and it was just time for some updates and changes. And just going to brief you on some of the highlights of what some of those changes are. You know, we've -- staff has struggled with this ordinance because of some of the restrictions to specific entertainment areas of the city. And we made an attempt to loosen restrictions with the temporary health permits back in 2019 to allow greater flexibility with our distilleries, wineries, and our brewery. So those changes did offer some flexibility, but there were still some areas where we needed to provide those -- that added flexibility under our Special Events Ordinance. In addition to that, those needed changes, we also have the upcoming annexation of Castle Hills. We struggled with special events in our mall district just because of the multitude of events that they were wanting to hold at that location. Currently, our city ordinance only allows for two special events per year, and you have to have 180 days between those events. So that didn't -- that doesn't necessarily work out for what the mall district is trying to do. In addition to that, we made some boundary changes to the Old Town Entertainment District, and James is going to go over those in a few moments to how those boundary areas have So we added some language to the definition of a special event to things that may lead to being classified as a special event. So these aren't necessarily 100 percent they have to pull a special events permit, but certain requirements are made. We know we've added this additional language, rodeo, equestrian events, automobile exhibitions. So if those include, you know, road closures, those types of things, then that could require a special events permit. Also, we clarified the notifications to impacted property owners. So we were having situations where a special event would take place, and we were finding out that all of the parcel owners that were affected by the special event were not necessarily notified. So now at this point, the copy of the notification will be required upon the application, and also we'd have to get a list from them of all those landowners or residents that they're planning on notifying prior to the issuance of a special events permit. We also added a little bit of teeth to the ordinance that if there was a situation where we had repeated violations of the specifics of the ordinance, that may lead to a denial of a future special event to the same entity. Additional changes that were made, we put a little clarity in there that if a special event permit is required, if there's impacts to city property, street, public right-of-way, or city resources to maintain public safety. Prior to this, we only had some language in there saying that a special event is required if there's a street closure, or, you know, if there's basically an issue or some sort of issue with public safety. So there's a little bit of language added to this to maybe kick in the need for a special event depending on the circumstance. There was also some updated language to reflect the current departments. As I said earlier, this was written in 2007, so we basically did some updates to certain departments, including adding the language Neighborhood and Inspection Services. So it made the ordinance make a little bit more sense. Also, as stated earlier, we are making some changes to the boundary of the Old Town Entertainment District, and with that, the original definition of Old Town is located in a separate ordinance. And so because we're changing those boundaries, there's another area of the ordinance that needs to be adjusted. And then we also made some adjustments to the fee schedule, so there were some changes So what we've done is we've made some -- we created some event zones, and one of them y'all are already familiar with, the Old Town Entertainment District. Also, we have the Mall District, which would include, I believe there's six to eight parcels that currently are with the Music City Mall, and the Castle Hills Community District. And that area includes the Queen Margaret Community Center, the Village Shops, and Lake Avalon, and the newly-named Bill Weaver Arena. So we added some additional flexibility to the Special Events Ordinance. Just to remember that basically what we did is we changed the time between special events outside of these event zones from 180 days to 90 days. So anywhere in the city outside of these four event zones, there's greater flexibility. They still only are able to have two events per year, but the time between those events are now down to 90 days. And also, the city-sponsored events and city-operated events are not required to meet two special event permits per year. And so in addition to that, we've also added these four event zones that also have that same flexibility. So outside of a city-operated or city-sponsored event, any individual entity, business owner pulling a special event permit inside these four entertainment zones, they're not necessarily limited to two per year. Basic, you know, in the example of Wayne Ferguson Plaza, if they were able to get that reservation, they would be able to do multiple special events per year. We've also, in these four districts, we've waived the -- we have a proposal to waive the application fee for a special event. You know, we want to be able to promote events in these particular areas, and so we don't really want that to be a hindrance for the applicant. Also, we have a proposal to decrease the fee for police and fire service costs in the Old Town Entertainment District only. So out of those four entertainment districts, we're just talking about Old Town Entertainment District to look at, you know, we're really wanting to promote events here in this particular area. And what we'll do is, you know, we can come back and look at this, you know, six months from now, a year from now, and see what sort of impacts that that caused to staffing to see if this is the right decision. But it's definitely been a hindrance in the past, and it's also to be able to work around our current ordinance. You know, a lot of times, you know, the city would most likely have to sponsor an event in order to allow that to happen under our current city ordinance. So I think James is going to kind of break down each one of these entertainment districts and talk about how these boundaries have changed and kind of what the reasoning behind us creating these four district areas.
Thank you, Chris. I don't usually have to adjust the microphone. That puts me off my game a little bit, so. So Mayor Protem, council, thank you for your time this evening. I'm going to talk very quickly through the four event zones that are being created in this proposed ordinance change and explain why we have them. So the first is the Old Town Entertainment District, and I want to point out there are some boundary changes. The green is what we currently have. The red outline is what is being proposed. The changes are partly to eliminate from the zone some single-family properties that were previously included, also to add in properties that do have entertainment uses, such as Bent Distillery that was left out of the original boundary. And we did extend it, so you'll notice, south between Mill and Keely, that area is probably a great target for redevelopment. We don't know what it's going to be. It can always be cut out of the zone later if council decides it's not appropriate. So that's a bit of a preemptive add. Now, the main reason for doing this is we want to encourage private -- we want to encourage public events in Old Town put on by private entities. I'll give you an example. The Perk Coffee House held a public concert last fall at Wayne Ferguson Plaza. We'd love to see them do that frequently. We want as many events downtown as we can do. We're pretty well maxed out on our calendar and on our resources for doing events ourselves. So if we can encourage them, we will. With that particular concert, our friends at the perk pointed out that it was a bit more costly than they thought it would be. They paid for a street closure, which isn't much. They also paid for police and fire presence on-site, and that can be costly. So that explains why we are looking at reducing those public safety costs within the Old Town Entertainment District. We didn't propose that for the other three districts because they are more commercial in nature. I'll talk about those when we get to those slides. So trying to encourage more events put on by private organizations that don't require city sponsorship, don't require city staff, but can still help build Old Town into a great destination site. This is the Castle Hills Community District, and as Chris described, it includes three elements. As you look at the map, you'll see the Queen Margaret Community Center site. That is where they currently have their spring concerts. It includes the shops, the Village Shops, where they currently have several activities, car show, wine walk. And it includes Lake Avalon, where they currently have their Easter egg hunt and their July Fourth Freedom Fest. One concern we heard from Castle Hills residents during the Education Committee, Annexation Education Committee, was they wanted to make sure their current events were protected. And quite frankly, the ordinance as it's drafted now would make some of these events, well, illegal. They'd have too many events in too short of a time. So we had to make a change to the ordinance to allow this in order to keep those events going. But at the same time, we also recognize that it's going to be a big change for the CHMA putting on the events and for the residents. The city needs to be involved. We don't want to be in there taking over their events. So we've identified out of the events they do, there's three or four that would be subject to the permit process. The Freedom Fest would be, the Spring Concerts would be, there's two of them, one in May, one in June. There's a turkey trot put on by a resident. We've had trouble nailing that one down, so we're still trying to contact them about that. So Freedom Fest is held primarily in Lake Avalon, and then some activities in the Village Shops. The concerts, they put a stage right there in the middle of Lady of the Lake, south of the shops, and they have the audience in the grounds of the community center. So we are working with the CHMA on an event sponsor agreement where we will become a sponsor on those to help kind of ease their sticker shock and also make sure we have some involvement there to keep those events going in the future. It also creates flexibility. If we want to have some events out there, I was out there with Darren Watkins earlier today, visiting the community center site and Lake Avalon, and Lake Avalon just lays out beautifully for events. We might want to do some there. This will give us that flexibility as well to encourage other resident groups to come in and do that.
James, can you talk a little bit about an event like the Wine and Art Walk that was held? Most of the council attended that. Why we would not consider that a special ordinance?
So as it's run now, we don't believe the wine walk would qualify for needing a permit. We know their car show wouldn't. We don't believe that their wine walk would either. It's simply outdoor vendors in a commercial space on private property. There could be some changes that they might make in the future that would make it subject. Right now, we don't think it is. So we're not worried too much about sponsoring those, plus they're being put on by a commercial entity, and we're not as maybe forgiving with commercial entities as we are with private and nonprofit entities.
I had a quick question. So this is one zone, correct?
Correct.
So I was just wondering, I mean, there's three different shapes drawn here, so I was wondering if there was a reason that they weren't all kind of joined together, if they were, if we were trying to partition out three different...
It just follows the parcel lines. We could have put lines between them on the streets, but since the streets are city property, it's kind of implied that if you do multiple zones, you're going to be using those streets.
Okay.
But you wouldn't use the streets and not use those zones. Bill Weaver Arena, and let me first say that this is not intended for the city to bring PBR Lewisville every weekend for 52 weeks out of the year. Those residents on Parkway like the event, but every week, I think they'd be a little bit up in arms. This is intended to allow us to use this effectively as a rental facility. That is one of the objectives council set when they approved the renovations at the arena. We're currently working on starting discussions on a rental policy and rental fees for this facility. So the city would still bring in a couple of big events a year, PBR, maybe a full rodeo. We've talked about Juneteenth with cowboys of color. We also have the Fiesta Chara. Those will be infrequent, no more than probably four a year and likely fewer than four. And then we'll have rental clients, most of whom will be fairly low-impact. For example, the high school rodeo club wants to be able to have some practices there. That's bringing in 30 people, maybe six or seven trailers. They're there for a couple of hours, they leave, it's usually before the lights even go on. But at the same time, we know that we've already heard from a couple of private groups that want to rent the facility for a larger rodeo event. So we want to be able to allow that, but we also want to be able to control that so it doesn't become a burden on those residents. So adding this as an event zone gives the flexibility. If there's a group that wanted to come out and once a month have riding lessons and, you know, the dancy horses you see in the Olympics, I know they have a real name, but I call them dancy horses because that's what they do. If they want to do a dancy horse show here, yeah, the horse lady would know. But I'm going to stick with dancy horses. If the dancy horses are going to come every Saturday, first Saturday of the month for 12 months, and we look at it and decide the impact is not severe on the neighborhood, it can be done without harming those residents, this change would allow them to do that. Without this, they could only do it twice. So frequency would be limited, and also again, we're trying to protect that neighborhood as well. And then there's the Mall District. And the Mall District is an interesting one. It's all commercial property. So again, we're not quite as forgiving with commercial properties because they're doing the event in order to benefit themselves. And we understand, it's an advertising marketing expense for them. It's not usually a nonprofit fundraiser or a neighborhood group. But at the same time, this property is challenging. They've tried a number of times to bring in events, the K-pop festival, the circus, other things, but they're only allowed two per year. Now, there's multiple lots here. There's actually different property owners in some cases, but there's multiple parcels here, so they've tried rotating those events from parcel to parcel, and that's okay, except some of those parcels really are just not suited for events. So we believe that this will give them the flexibility to really maximize the use of that property. If they believe bringing in public events can help that property to prosper and thrive, we believe it will help our residents to have more things to do and bring more visitors to Lewisville. This also does give flexibility. If in the future, the mall property redevelops into some kind of mixed-use development, you would already have this in place. You could adjust the boundaries as needed, but it would already be in place to encourage that type of use. So once again, giving the flexibility where we think it needs to be. Now, these are the only four event zones that we are proposing right now. That doesn't mean there won't be more in the future. We already heard from Castle Hills, from Eric Stanley, they were interested in the realm and Crown Center. Right now, those developments are not really fully on the ground. We think it's best to wait till they're on the ground so you know where events are going to be held. Again, we don't want to put single-family residential or even apartments into those zones if we can avoid it. So eventually, those probably will become event zones. You could see the Northern Gateway becoming an event zone. You could see possibly the Tower Bay Lake Park area becoming an event zone. But as of today, these are the only four that we see that really have that need and fit our criteria for creating one. Those are not dancy horses, those are dancy cattle. So Chris is still here. If there's any questions for either one of us.
I had a quick question. So just so I'm understanding this correctly, we have the four new zones, but this is also a changing of the ordinance that affects the entire city. So which pieces, I'm understanding that the frequency is really what's changing the most per zone?
Yeah, so really the biggest change, you know, for those areas outside of the zones would be the decrease in the frequency from 180 days to 90. But some of those changes that I talked about, some adjustments to the definition, or, you know, maybe a little bit more strength to the ordinance, you know, that would apply to not only any special event outside of those districts, but within.
Okay.
So what did not change outside of the zones are the number of special events. They're still capped at two. You know, that becomes really kind of a staff workload issue in many, many ways. So if we, you know, were to get questions on that, that would, might be something you would look at expanding over time, but it is a staff workload. And when you talk about major special events, you're talking about representatives from every department coming together, planning, I mean, it's a pretty intense process. So there is a limit, I think, on how many special events we can actually support, and so that's why we did not increase that frequency.
And I think the important thing to remember is that, you know, yes, we want to promote special events in some of these districts. Outside of that, you know, we ran into a situation where they were wanting to do some sort of flea market every weekend, and while, you know, they were limited to two special events per year. And so, you know, there's some things that we want to promote, and then there are some things that maybe we don't necessarily want to promote as a city.
I have a question. Would this apply to, like, block parties or neighborhood block events?
So for block parties, there's not really a special event required unless they're looking for a street closure. A lot of times, if they are renting a rock-the-block trailer, then all the fees are waived for that.
Thank you.
And just to give an example on the frequency issue, church is not a great example anymore because state law changed, and now there's not a lot we can do about it. But my church, for example, every year likes to have an Easter festival and a fall festival, Halloween, a lot of churches do. Easter moves around, and so if Easter's in April, April, October, six months, no problem. But if Easter's early in March or late, right at the end of April, then you can't do it in a 180-day window. And so the 90 days creates flexibility without creating a situation where there's a recurring nuisance at a particular location.
But that's really, it only counts if they're, the public infrastructure or the public space is impacted, right? If they had, if a church had the event on their property?
Again, churches might not be the best example because they have some state exemptions now, but the impact on public property is not the only trigger for special event ordinance. Bringing an amplified sound, selling alcohol, there are certain other triggers that are in there. One of them is use of public property. So previously, churches did have to get a special event permit for those things. We'll probably still need to look at it and see if they still do. If they consider it a ministry activity, then we probably can't require that.
Okay.
Couple of questions, comments. First of all, I think you kind of beat me to the punch. This is one of the things I was going to bring up at some point in time, so I'm very happy about this. I think it's been way too restrictive on some of those businesses. I'm glad you got Ben included in there because of that. So I also think I also read, so a special event, I guess, is also based on number of persons, right? 100 people, is that one of the classifications?
Yeah, so there's a lot of different criteria listed in the ordinance itself, and so there are a lot of things written in that ordinance where it wouldn't necessarily need to meet that specific criteria, but it can meet any one of those criteria. So one of those criterias, if that facility is expecting 100 individuals per day beyond their expected normal operating amount, then that may be grounds for requiring a special event permit. But there's a lot of other things, some of those I mentioned earlier, that could also trigger a special event permit.
I think that's it. Thanks.
Anyone else have any other comments, questions? Okay. Thank you very much. So I think this concludes our workshop session, and we have two minutes until 7:00, so we will adjourn and reconvene in a couple of minutes. It is 7:00 PM, so we will go ahead and call to order regular session, the city council meeting, and we're going to start off with the invocation by Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Jones.
Please rise and join me in a moment of sound contemplation.
Thank you.
Join me in our pledge to the American and Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas one nation, indivisible.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas one nation, indivisible. Okay. We will start off with agenda item number one, public hearing. Approval of an economic development agreement between the city of Louisville and Steritech LLC and approval of the resolution approving the terms and conditions of a tax abatement agreement between the city of Louisville and 1206 North Stemmons LLC and authorizing the city manager or her designee to execute said agreements. Steritech and its affiliate, 1206 North Stemmons LLC, is a medical firm that provides sterilizations to med tech, biotech, food and drug industries, academic institutions, and technology businesses. They have purchased the site at 1206 North Stemmons Freeway and are constructing a new state-of-the-art facility on-site with an estimated 17 million in property improvements. The tax abatement agreement provides for a 10-year agreement for abatement of 75% of real property taxes paid to the city. The economic development agreement provides for a one-time construction sales tax grant, a one-time building permit fee grant, and a one-time capital recovery fee grant. It also includes an annual grant equal to 100% of the business personal property taxes paid to the city for years one through seven, and 75% of business personal property taxes paid to the city for years eight through 10. The recommendations of the city council approve the resolution and agreements as set forth in the caption above and authorize the city manager or her designee to execute the agreements. Do we have a motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Second.
All right. Please submit your vote. I assume my vote. Okay, do we have a second motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Got a motion and a second, please vote. All right, item passes. All right, moving on to Visitor Citizens Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor, or Mayor Pro Tim, rather than to an individual council member or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to the beginning of their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making impersonal, personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. Do we have anybody here for the Visitor Citizens Forum?
No, we have not received any cards.
No cards?
No cards.
Okay. All right, seeing no one move, we will move on to the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so request. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Do we have any cards?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Okay.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please submit your vote. And item passes. Okay, moving on to agenda item number six, regular hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending the city, the Louisville City Code, Section 15-87, limitations on turning around, prohibiting U-turns on southbound Josie Lane at the intersection of Memorial Elementary School North driveway. To serve the new Memorial Elementary School, a traffic signal was recently constructed on Josie Lane at the intersection of the Memorial Elementary School Northern driveway. With the traffic signal construction, a left-turn storage lane was constructed in the median on northbound Josie Lane to serve the elementary school. However, a storage lane was not constructed on southbound Josie Lane because there is no development on the east side of Josie Lane at this time. Southbound motorists on Josie Lane are unsafely stopping in the leftmost through lane with a 50 mile an hour speed limit to negotiate a U-turn at the intersection. Also, an existing hill just south of the median opening on Josie Lane poses a visibility problem for southbound motorists taking the U-turns. Staff recommends the installation of a no-U-turn sign on southbound Josie Lane at the intersection until a left-turn storage lane is installed with future development on the east side of Josie Lane. The transportation board, the transportation board considered this item at September 7, 2021 meeting and voted seven to zero to approve the recommendation to the city council. The recommendation is that city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above, and David Semen, the city engineer, is available for questions.
Move to approve the ordinance.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
This is an ordinance of Louisville City Council amending the Louisville City Code, Chapter 15, Section 15-87(c), by prohibiting U-turns on southbound Josie Lane at the Memorial Elementary School North driveway, providing for repealer severability penalty in an effective date and declaring an emergency.
Please vote. Okay, passes unanimously. Oops, sorry about that. All right. Agenda item number seven, consideration of an ordinance amending the Louisville City Code, Article 5, Special Events. The proposed amendment to the Special Events Ordinance clarifies the permit application process, creates and defines special event zones for the Old Town Entertainment District, Castle Hills, Music City Mall, and the Bill Weaver Arena, provides greater flexibility for those zones and expands the Old Town Entertainment District. The recommendation is that we need to pull this item and take no action for the reasons stated earlier.
I move that we pull and place this item on the next agenda for consideration.
Yeah, you just, we just need it pulled. We just need to put it on the next agenda.
I move that we pull.
It'll come in a different form.
So she amended that? She amended the motion, then we have?
Second.
Okay. She amended the motion, yeah. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, passes unanimously. Moving on to agenda item eight, consideration of a resolution nominating candidates to the Denton Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. The Denton Central Appraisal District has requested that the city nominate up to five individuals to serve as the D-CAD Board of Directors prior to October 15th. After all entities have made their nominations and votes have been cast, the five candidates that receive the most votes become the board directors as of January 1st. Board members serve a two-year term. All board members are up for reelection. The council selected to nominate Alex Buck on the September 20, 2021 city council meeting. The city council can nominate additional individuals if so desired. Recently, Ann Pomcall has indicated she is interested in being considered for an additional nomination. Recommendation is that city council approve the resolution as set forth in the caption above.
I move that we nominate Ann Pomcall.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, and please vote. And that passes unanimously. Okay, item nine, consideration of a resolution extending the declaration of local disaster for public health emergency until 11:59 PM on October 18, 2021. On February 17, 2021, Mayor Rudy Durham, I think maybe that means, I think maybe that's February 17, 2020. Mayor Rudy Durham, acting in accordance with the authority granted to him under the city charter and code of ordinances and under Section 418.108a of the Texas Government Code, declared a local state of disaster for public health emergency due to concerns related to COVID-19 disaster declaration, which the Louisville City Council subsequently ratified, supported, and continued until 11:59 PM on October 4, 2021. Ongoing evaluation of circumstances related to the virus and updated recommendations of the Centers for Disease Control and the Texas Department of State Health Services indicate that the conditions necessitating the disaster declaration have and will continue to exist for a period extending beyond October 4, 2021. Recommendation is that the city council consider the resolution as set forth. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? If not, please vote. Okay, passes unanimously. And so then we will move on to reports, and I have absolutely no idea where TJ was with his order of how he's doing this. So I just want to mix it up a little bit because I think we always go this direction, so I want to start down here and go this direction.
Mayor Pro Tim, the first council member would be Mr. Meredith.
Okay, we're going to do staff first, though. Okay. Okay.
No report.
Nothing?
Nothing, Mayor Pro Tim.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tim, I know the mayor's not here, but the lake level is 521, which is one foot below.
We'll be happy to tell him.
The normal pool.
Thank you.
Nothing to report.
All right.
No report.
No report.
No report.
Okay, excellent. So then, well, I guess we can continue coming down this way, and then we'll skip over to you. Chief? Nothing? Nothing? Okay, then we'll skip over Bob and come, we'll come back to you, Bob.
Well, I have a report, so I'll change it up. Louisville Public Library activities for the weeks of, weeks of October 4 through the 18th. Library is returned to pre-pandemic hours, Monday through Thursday, 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Friday and Saturday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, closed on Sunday. Drive-up window continues to offer pickup service during all hours of operation. Drive-up book return remains open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Financial Planning Series Saving for Adults, Tuesday, October 5, 6:30 to 7:30. No registration required in the Crawford Meeting Room. Polymer Clay Afternoon for All Ages, Friday, October 8, 1:30 to 3:30. Registration is required, and that is at The Hive. Green Thumb Club for children ages six to 10 years, Friday, October 8, 2 to 3. Ticket is required at the Bennett Program Room.
Okay, thank you. I think we now go to you, Bob, right?
I guess, if that's what you say. Okay. I have several things going on at the Louisville Grand Theater. First of all, performances in my French, Le Ballet de la Traculat, presented by Lake City's Ballet, will go on this weekend, October 8 and 9, with two performances on the 9th. I'm not sure what the time is on those, but both days. The Acoustic Jam is every Friday night, going from 6 to 9. That is presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville. And some activities, Dia de los Muertos Free Art Workshop, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville on October 9. And then art exhibitions that are ongoing right now are the UNT Master Student Group Exhibition, presented by the University of North Texas College of Visual Arts and Design, and that's going on now until October 16. And the other exhibition at this point is Western Roundup, again, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville, and that's ongoing until October 23. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Well, Brandon?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. The city is looking for artists for our decorative crosswalk public art project. If you've been on Purnell in Charles, I believe, I'm getting this right, and Old Orchard in Fox, you'll see really cool crosswalk. We have projects that are on Valley View Drive and Edmonds Lane, Rock Brook Drive and Ridge Mead Drive near Rock Brook Elementary. Sign up today. The applications can be sent, must be sent in by October 6 to Louisville, and you can get all the information on the Louisville Grand, but they're really neat projects. We have one on my block I saw when they're, when they're putting it together. Check it out for yourself, and sign up if you're an artist. That's it for me.
Yeah, those are really awesome. I love them. I really don't have any report, per se, but I have to give kudos to staff. It was a very long week and two fun-filled packed weekends, and everything was excellent. I personally have received zero negative on anything. Everyone has raved about it, and y'all went over and above, and I am very, very appreciative of that. I would also like to say, Lila, the L-I-S-D portion of Lila, the outdoor learning area, they hosted my child's, my, my child, my grandchild's fourth grade class, and she came back telling me all kinds of things. So if you haven't been to Lila, you need to really look it up on Facebook and go partake. It's very, very, very interesting. And I also would like to say, those of you that are leaving and traveling for TML, be safe, bring back lots of knowledge, and that's it.
Done.
No report.
I skipped over you, Eric. Do you have anything to report?
Yes, ma'am, just want to say thank you to the council, but for the support of both weekends for the PBR and Western Days, and I've seen a lot of them, but this was really special. I think our employees went well and above and beyond in efforts of long, very long days and late nights and early morning. I couldn't have been prouder, so thank you to the staff that worked all, both events and for many days, many hours. They did a fantastic job.
Well, I kind of wanted to piggyback on that as well because, you know, I live here in Old Town, and so every year, I've only been here for five years, but every year, except for last year, you know, Western Days is the big weekend, this is the big one. And it's, it always amazes me how it seems like, you know, this event just kind of descends into, into existence, and it's, it's big, there's things everywhere, there's so much work that's been done, and then as soon as it's over, it's just all gone.
It disappears.
Yeah.
It literally just disappears.
And it's amazing, it's absolutely amazing what a coordinated effort that is, and I realize that it's, it is a lot of effort, and I appreciate it. There was, I don't know if it was the city or if it was just people behaving themselves this year, but I was not picking up garbage out of my yard the next morning. It was, it was very, very good all around. Really enjoyed the event, so I appreciate all of that work that everybody did. I also quickly wanted to mention, mostly for the benefit of my husband, that the animal center is, the animal shelter still has an adoption special going on until October 16, where there's half off on the adoption fee. So if you see my husband, please remind him of that for me.
You do need that second dog.
I do need a second dog. I am, I'm in the market, so that's all I had. If no one else has anything, then we will, we're done with the workshop, we have no closed session, and so...
I move to adjourn.
All right. And I just want to, before we adjourn officially, I do just want to say, I mean, it's 19 minutes after seven, and I got this done, so y'all should tell TJ. All right. Please vote. We are adjourned, thank you.